And we'll go ahead and get started with the workshop. This is a workshop, so there's no voting going on today. It's while Councilmember Wallace is in the Wizard of Oz this morning on the big screen. And so I guess unmute us. We are muted. So she can hear us.
No, no vote. That's why she's on. She's on now.
Councilmember Wallace, can you hear us?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, so I know that Councilman Stovall is will be on his way. I've texted the other three council members to see where they are if they're coming today. There's Councilman McKelvey there. So we will start. You have a slight amended schedule for today and tomorrow. Johnny's calling me. We're in the meeting, Johnny. Central Dispatch is going to move up today. Lenanda had a death in the family and they have funeral tomorrow, so she's going to come today.
Which one is that?
Lenanda, Central Dispatch, instead of yesterday. I put it on your schedule. It's crossed out for tomorrow. I added to the bottom of today. And so we will, I'm going to turn it over to Nathan. Let him start us off.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the Finance Department, a budget is a financial and legal document that establishes the appropriations. The City of Jackson is authorized by ordinance to spend in the service of the people who live, work, and visit here. For you and the people that live in this community, a budget is a statement of priorities and intentions. It's a planning document. It's a document that expresses in dollars and cents what you will accomplish and what you hope to accomplish in the coming fiscal year. Over the last months, we've worked with every department in the city to collect and quantify their budget requests, and these budget requests represent the resources they feel they need to best serve the citizens of Jackson. I'm grateful to all of our department heads and their financial teams for engaging in the budgeting process and embracing our new central budget entry system. I am incredibly grateful to our finance and accounting teams who have worked long hours assembling data, answering questions, and several of those questions were mine, and serving as frontline tech support as we switch to this new method. We have estimated revenues based on several factors, including the most recent property tax assessment data, formulas, and best practices from consulting agencies for our state shared revenues, and spent time consulting with experts, including professional economic forecasters from the University of Tennessee Boyd Center, to estimate local sales and business tax revenues. Statewide, there are ongoing questions about revenue projections given our current economic uncertainty. Based on the data we have and based on our conversations with Dr. Larry Kessler at the University of Tennessee, we're estimating modest growth in local sales and business taxes. Jackson is an economic hub for the area, and we continue to see new business and industry starts, a growing population, and new investment. Since August of 2024, August of 2024, we've seen an increase in $130 million in property tax assessments, which should result in $2.1 million in new property tax billing. Our state shared revenue estimates, which include state sales tax, state beer tax, TBA payments in lieu of tax, and other state shared revenues, were increased only by about $60,000, resulting in a total of $10.3 million in state shared revenue. This is a much smaller increase than in previous years reflecting uncertainty about the statewide economic outlook. The process that we are in is still evolving. Our HR team is actively engaged in capturing personnel costs for part-time personnel in several departments, and this data is not yet reflected in the information before you. As I've said before, our estimates and budgets generally overestimate expenses and underestimate revenues. In the Finance and Budget Department, we have prepared this budget under Mayor Congress Directive to budget conservatively. That being said, the expense budget requests before you are largely the requests directly from the departments with some reductions or adjustments from the mayor's office or our office to reflect direct reductions or adjustments based on information or experience. And that's all I've got to say to start.
Do we have a question about that?
Sure.
A microphone trying to die like me. Total revenue. Could you give us a breakdown roughly of how much sales tax projected is next year? How much property tax? How much in grants? How much in licenses and services and any and another category of everything else? In other words, what is our total revenue projected for next year?
Total general fund revenue projected for next year?
What color tab is that?
We're on the yellow tab. I'm sorry, yellow tab, pages one through six, one through eight. Total general fund revenues projected at $95,076,394. Now, broken out, the general governmental revenue, which includes almost all of the things that you asked for, totals about $89 million. At this moment, Councilman, I can't break it down by property tax, sales tax, and those sorts of things, but we will be able to do that very shortly.
Any grants in there?
There are grants in here, and if you look on pages one through eight.
How was that total of grants?
I'm sorry, that's not a number that I have totaled together right now.
Could we get the total grants and also part, any part we allow for matching, so on, so we can look at one sheet of paper and say, for next budget year, this is our grants. And also, what, like you say, it's in there now if you add up the property tax and all. One comment about that, on the 425 budget was handed out a week or two ago, we showed revenue of $92,776,000. And now we show revenue of $95 million, which is good. Give you another couple of weeks, can you find three more million?
Probably not.
Well, my serious question is, what, how'd that three million show up in two weeks?
There were some additional changes in the way we calculated property tax receivables for prior year property taxes, and there were some additional business tax revenue that we were unable to capture previously. Our estimates previously were based on two months. Our business tax revenue is now based on 10 months, along with some sales tax revenue. I would suspect that those are the biggest changes.
I should know this, but let me ask you that. On the business tax, we showed up about 1.9 million. Is that correct? But was it up four million? Is that a decrease? No, excuse me, I'm getting, nevermind. So 1.9 million, that is your revised figure?
Are you looking at line 40400 on page one?
Probably so. I'm looking at where on my notes it said business tax of 1.9 million off the 2025 budget.
Business tax was underestimated for the 2025 budget.
Okay, okay. On revenue for electric, we have a budget of about $2 million, and we had a $4 million budget. What happened to the $2 million?
If you look at my internal notes, there is, I cannot tie the previous budget to a number that makes sense.
So that four million, we don't, is it a good number, bad number?
It's a, it's a bad number.
Okay. That was a couple of questions I had about revenue.
We anticipate about $1.83 million in revenue for the tax equivalent for electric this year.
Okay, that's even now for the 2.068 that was on the budget I had seen.
For next year's budget, we anticipate 2.068. For the, for the current fiscal year, it's about 1.83.
Right. And the four million earlier, we don't know.
Well, I suspect, I mean, how far do you want to get in the weeds?
No, we're too far now because we're at a lot of.
Okay, okay.
The, the new plant that's going in, it's going to go, mine for cryptocurrency, is going to produce a lot of revenue. How much of that will we get?
I'm not, I don't know. I mean, I'm sure there will be a tax on that. I haven't seen the tax card for that. If I had known, I could have calculated that before we got here.
Rumor has it that that's going to be the largest user electricity in the whole county. And, and if that be the case, there's probably going to be a quarter of a million dollars a month revenue. So we need to see. I know we don't.
The tax equivalent numbers that were received are not based on revenue. They're based on the value of the plant. And so unless they have to make a drastic expansion in plant, I don't suspect the tax equivalent will increase much.
Anything else you want to present on general government?
I'm prepared to answer any questions that are here.
Larry, no. Nathan, you had said the grants are in one through eight. If you look at all the item, like, it's, it shows, like, on page two, like midway down, it says F or V C I F, and then it says G R A, so that'll show you where the grants are. Right, right, right. I'm just saying that if you wanted to look.
Detail. Matter of fact, what are those two grants that you mentioned? One of went to zero, didn't it?
Yeah, the V C I F, we don't know if that's going to be funded next year. Police can speak to that more directly than I can.
We know whether or not it'll be funded. That could be a big number, couldn't it?
It could. And that's not a number. I mean, that's not information that I have. Now, if you look down into pages three through eight, you will see that some of those are broken out by what we call org. And our goal ultimately is to break all of the revenues down by org. Right now, just the general government revenues are at the top on pages one through three. Hopefully, we'll eventually, possibly shortly, have those categorized by the revenue type, whether it's a tax or a fee or something else. But as you go down through, there, you will see things like the recovery report. You'll see police admin revenue, police patrol revenue, police, different types of engineering fees, other types of fees that are actually assigned to a department.
Kind of goes aside, but we're talking about budget. Another report I like to see is from the Parks and Rec for the Civic Center Fairground, all of the authority and all with their total revenue and their total expense on one sheet of paper.
And I can generate that for you as long as the revenue lines are assigned to the correct org. That's just a matter of printing it. And Tony and I can work on that.
On your 25 actual column, that's figured through what month?
The 25 projection, the 25 actual column is through now.
Through today?
Well, through, it was through May 9. The 25 projection is based on a 12-month either annualization or what we know to be the truth.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on general government before we start down the list?
The library, is it listed in here? No, no, no revenue. It doesn't bring any revenue in. Okay.
All right, go up.
I figure, yes, sir. I kind of made a nest if you're looking.
So you go through revenues, they're on, you get past the eight pages of revenue in the yellow tab, and then start the general government expenditures is on page one, mayor's office starts on page two. And then I'll turn it over to Ron and let him cover all that.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. One thing I will add that Councilman Lawrence, I think, will be helpful for a lot of the questions that you're having, is probably within the next week, we will be having our first ever budget book, our proposed operating budget book. Nathan and I have been working with Tyler to create that. We literally got the draft of it.
Yes, 23.
Yes, yesterday evening. And what it's going to show is every fund, every line item, as well as some summary graphics, where does our revenue come from? Where does it go? Things like that. So you're going to have, one, something that's a little bit more holistic to help you and also your constituents look at this budget and kind of get the main takeaway. So I wanted to let you know that that is coming and something that we've been working on for a couple of months now. So just wanted to let you know that that is in the works, and I think will help also further give you a better insight into the proposed budget that's in front of you. But happy to answer any questions about our office.
On page one, under the general fund, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lines down, TRA. What is TRA?
Can you give me the number?
Yeah, 522.
Is it 52006?
Yeah, yeah. So that's what?
It's J T A.
It's, why, which is a good one. Why is the budget so much lower than Jack's on that account?
They, we analyzed that out. We pulled, they pulled down in chunks, so they, they push, they pull it down as they need to match with funds.
Yeah, we should actually.
It's a pretty good number then.
The 1.3 is a good number. The 1.83 is a bad number. Not going to apologize for that.
Do we have a latest copy of the library budget?
I have a projected library budget.
They don't. She shares a copy, but what happened? We get the numbers from, from the county. They give us what they're going to approve, and then they give us the numbers that we're joint funding.
960.
Yeah, it's what Michelle, is that her name? Yeah, she sent over those numbers to Nathan.
That was my next question to answer.
Let me go down the list again, on that same page, one. Three from the bottom, number 57359. What's that V C I F C grade? What is that?
V C I F grant is a, is a police grant, it's about a pension fund. And there were two tranches of that grant, as I recall.
And item 52017, J I L P L.
Jackson International Food and Art Festival.
And 55001, what's that?
Transfer to other agencies.
That'd be the transfer to capital.
Yeah. We haven't put a number in there yet because we hadn't got.
What is transfer to CO and transfer to CR? It's right under that. 002 and 003.
One of those are transfers to. Let's see, the 55002 is the, is a transfer to the capital fund. 55003 is a transfer to the CRA.
Okay, and 001 was transferred to what?
It was transferred to other funds, but it was booked last year as a transfer to. That was booked in the old, when we had the beautiful Excel spreadsheets as opposed to working in town.
And we're, I mean, we are working on consolidating some of these accounts because there are various duplicates that have been used over the years, so.
You go to my favorite account, other, $725,000.
What's the, the number for that, sir?
It's 5208.
That's in, that's in the back of your pack. So that's going to be the.
Appropriations to other agencies, yes, sir.
It's in the back, in the pocket. In the pocket. That first sheet that you have there is granting donations, and the second sheet, let's see, second sheet. Second sheet, no. You could have that. I hand them out and see. Yeah, it's there right there. Yeah, that's the other.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it's in, it's in your pocket. It is. I'll pull it out, show you what it looks like.
What's forward, Jackson?
It's the Chamber's capital investment program. It's right here.
What is 085? It says Old C T Y.
Old City Pension Fund. We have a handful of retirees and their spouses that are on the Old City Pension Fund 41 N C R S.
Back on the other, so this is just basically a group of charities that we're giving to.
It's investments we're making, yeah.
We're investing in these charities. It's $780,000. How'd I get my charity on the list?
That's your charity.
But learning our rights and needs and that. No, I'm serious. My question is, how do we select what charities get on the list for $700,000 and what charities don't get on the list?
That's, you have a new policy that we're implementing.
New policy? Now that I got a copy here.
Yes, it's the statement sheet, oh sheets.
Okay. Well, okay, I just, my comment would be, we need to make sure all charities are aware they can apply for this.
Oh, they're aware.
Okay. I'm surprised they hadn't applied if they were aware. But anyway, okay, so that answers that question. The other is charities.
As part of that new policy going forward, once its full, parts of it haven't been implemented yet, we kind of had a implementation date in the future, and there'll be a call action where charities can submit. In addition, currently on the city website, if you hover over, how do I, there is a apply for, I believe it's a grant, and that's what is shown. It's a new nonprofit policy.
Does the council vote on these individually or just vote on this budget? So we budget, we pass this budget, this into the scope without any more council action?
You can make an amendment to remove one of them. You can make a motion to remove one.
Obviously, like I.
No, no, no.
Answer my question. That's good.
All right. We're going on page two, inexpensive. The no questions on page one, and that's where Ron picks up.
So as I already mentioned, Council, one of the things, well, the mayor's office is producing its budget book that you'll be getting in the next week. In addition to our core budget, I think what you'll see is we've looked to where we can make some cuts for line items that weren't fully used. And so overall, even if you take out salaries, you'll see our proposed budget is down 13% once you take out salaries and benefits to reflect what our true means are. Happy to answer any questions and then on, on those line items. And then the other thing I wanted to add is one of the things that we are doing. Looking at the budget holistically and trying to keep, as part of Nathan's comments about budgeting conservatively, we're looking to make sure that our budget doesn't grow above population plus inflation growth. That's a new initiative out of our office. The reason for that is if it grows above that amount, you're essentially. Essentially making the budget more expensive per taxpayer. That's a responsible budgeting policy gold standard that a lot of governments have been recommended to move to, and that's what we're seeking to do here. But happy to answer any specific questions that you have.
Comment. Thank you for that. This budget right here over the last year is not very much. Looks good on the surface, but if you look at our last three to four year here, sir, it is not good. 17% increase in the last three years. We've had two years of that, the last three years, it was almost 10% general fund growth. So to, to, to attach it to inflation plus that is a great idea. Well, thank you.
What I will say is, is actually your budgets over the past, since 2020, have come $7.3 million under population plus inflation growth. If you put that to a family of four, you have saved the average Jackson family $425. So you've been keeping under population plus inflation, maybe not year to year.
What, what years are you counting?
Since the 2020 budget.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, since 2020. Go back and look. Okay, I've got the same, some same numbers, and we're, we're, our government has grown well faster than inflation and population growth. We'll just get together after and compare the numbers. On the mayor's budget, if you could help us explain this, in 23, I think it was like about $800 million. Anyway, and it goes to seven, back to five, down to three, and back up to three, seven. And obviously, this is because we had people that we added and then split them off. Could you give us a little history of how this goes from eight million to three million? Excuse me, 800,000?
If you want to produce three million for us, that would be.
Let me apologize. I, I Michael last night and April today, and I'm usually half here and I'm a quarter here now. Anyway. If you could do that.
Sure, the, obviously, that was, I can't speak totally net because that was a little bit before my time. But the one thing I can mention is, one of the things that happened a little bit ago was some of the mayor's office staff was created under a new department, the Office of Innovation, and so that explains a lot of the, the decrease. And so you'll see, obviously, the Office of Innovation budget later on down in the list.
So what department spun off?
Several staff, it was spun off to create the Office of Innovation, which is still under the mayor's office. It's just listed as a separate department, and as well as Public Affairs, correct.
So how many people were in the 2024 budget?
I do not know the answer to that question.
How many people are in the 2025 mayor's budget now?
Are you talking, oh, in the mayor's office, the core mayor's office, just?
The budget that we've got here, general fund, mayor office.
Sure.
How many people?
There are three. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. We have also one part-time position as well.
Okay, now, of this original eight million, I'll never, 800,000, 800,000 of this 800,000 original, how many people were in it, we don't know?
Who was all in that 800,000? I can go and get you that back information, but I I, I, I can go and get you that back information, but I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, so what I'm leading to, or getting to is that, okay, how are we doing people-wise as far as, transfer to other departments and all, add them up together, did we end up with more people or less people?
Gotcha, I, I know that we have sunsetted at least one position in the past year out of the mayor, out of Public Affairs.
Two, one, one in Public Affairs, one in the mayor's office.
There you go, so, there's a sunset of decrease of two.
Uh, I, I still would like to see the, uh, job descriptions.
Sure.
Not, not, that we asked for those last year's budget and didn't give, not this year, last year, so we would like to see that.
I believe I've been working with, uh, Kelsey in HR, she's almost got all of them for you, it's a lot of positions, councilman.
Yes. That's all the question I've got, I see the list.
Okay.
Well, no, I lied. Uh, is this one got huge phone bill like the council does and all?
I do not believe so.
I had some notes on it, and maybe they've been taken away. Telephone, four thousand five hundred? Is that a reasonable number?
That, that is the, I mean, if you look at the current projection, we're at thirty-two for this year, so, it's remained flat.
And that's, that's, uh, we did that out, what, what is that included, I know, I know I've got a thousand dollars worth of it myself on my tablet.
That's, uh, and that, that telephones for innovation, public affairs, and mayor's office, it's all included.
Okay.
Brian can talk about the, the phone service. We, we did that on contract.
Okay.
Any more questions on the mayor's office? Ryan's just hanging up here, I will say we don't have to go back and forth.
Sure.
Internal auditor also starts, is on page two.
Good morning, mayor and council. Those of you are here and those are in the sunshine. Um, thank you for having me this morning. As you can see, I operate on a very modest budget, uh, operational expenses are very low. Um, I normally come in under budget, under the projections, uh, so this year, I'm asking for, the biggest thing on my budget is, um, five thousand dollar ticket for, uh, training mostly. I'm looking at, uh, broadening, uh, my network of internal auditors, uh, through membership in the National Internal Auditors Association, that will allow me to have access to best practices for internal auditors across the nation, so, other than that, I don't have much. Any questions?
Which, which item was that you asking?
Five thousand under training.
About zero, seven, five, yeah, I got it.
Yes, zero, seven.
I got a question, any questions?
What, that five thousand, is that trips somewhere, what is it?
It's, it's not trips, that will cover, um, membership into the Internal Auditors Association as well as training in different areas of internal audit, and it offers certifications, um, in different internal audit areas, and it actually will bring structure to our program. Um, as I talk with internal auditors, specifically throughout, um, our local area and the state of Tennessee, a lot of the internal audit programs are new, um, there's not a lot of structure, we share information, um, and there's just not a lot of best practices out there. This network is, uh, a group of professional internal auditors, um, in all areas of internal audit, including municipalities, and that will allow me to have additional training, um, in the internal audit area, uh, additional, uh, network, uh, that I can mentor with, and that will bring more structure to our internal program here for the city of Jackson.
After, is this a ongoing five thousand dollars?
No, no, this is the, uh, just the beginning, the membership is ongoing and it's very, very modest, I think it's less than three hundred dollars a year, but the training is the biggest, uh, expense included, then it's five thousand dollars, and it will not be ongoing.
After we get this training, it's something we can then train our people without going through the.
We, it, it'll, it'll help strengthen the internal audit program, yes, on the expectation of the external, internal audit throughout.
I want to ask you this, in fact, you presented by saying that, excuse me. I'm gonna ask every department the same question, because, uh, some came up last year that I don't want to come up again. We had a matter with an expense that the city has to pay, that's over and above what we could have paid in another department. And I asked the person in that department, why didn't you bring it up to the city before? And, uh, they said they did, but it wasn't including the budget, because I didn't know anything about it, and I think if, if, if I had known about it and the other members had known about it, we would have done something then. So I'm gonna ask the question to you and everybody else, is there anything in here that you have requested, was there anything that you requested that's not listed before us that, that you think is so important?
No, sir, I think the five thousand dollars that I'm asking for today will be adequate coverage for, uh, what I need to strengthen my.
No other, no other area in your department where you would need anything that's not on here?
No, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and I'm gonna ask every department too, is there anything, like, I know things happen, like unforeseen things happen in each department, um, so do you foresee, like, any, like, two months, three months down the road, any unforeseen, like, possible things that you may need to ask for or a budget amendment for, like, this is pretty cut and dry, I appreciate that, so, there's nothing that, like, there could be a copier that's on its last leg and you're not saying anything, you know, I, I don't know, I just, I want to make sure that, like, we get that from every department, because when we pass this, I don't want to see, like, two or three budget amendments from different departments and be like, what's going on, guys, you know, um, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that, my forecast is pretty accurate, um, I, I, my equipment is up to date and in good shape, I don't have a capital budget. I think this will be, um, more than adequate to cover all my needs.
Thank you.
And I, I did get a new scanner for free.
Oh, there you go.
For free, we, you know, we just transferred assets through departments, so, we try to save as much as we can, so.
Any questions?
So is Nathan getting this scanner, too?
Uh, Nathan actually donated the scanners, he got brand new ones, and the old ones were just sitting there that we could use, so we just kind of tag teamed and, and, you know, save money that way.
I got my scanners, I told you I would, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, bottom of page two, city council.
I have a question about the phones, and I'm a part of this problem because I've got a phone and a, and a pad, is that where we are?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, somebody's IT, I can't see who's out there.
Uh, Brian was here.
Is, is, anyway, it's seven thousand five hundred dollars. How is that broken up, because I don't think most people have a pad like I do.
I don't have anything.
So I was saying, and so you take one off, and it goes down to eight members.
We don't have a thing like that. Oh, excuse me, I was just gonna say, no, we don't have that same thing, we all have cell phones, so we're not loaded in that figure.
And that's what I was thinking, a cell phone, if everybody had a cell phone, hey, Russ doesn't have them.
I don't.
Throw a couple of pads in there for me and somebody else, how do you get up to seven thousand five hundred?
The Verizon bill.
I'm sorry.
Um, he's coming out the door.
Okay.
They're going back in.
Scared them all.
You gotta be quiet, you gotta be quiet around, I know, scare them. There's Brown right there.
Thank goodness you're here.
Apologies, I was finishing hot yoga.
What was the question?
They want to know whether, they want to know whether city council, so I can tell you so.
Okay, so the, um, we are on state contract with Verizon for all of our mobile devices, so there's a thirty-four dollar a month charge uh, for each device, but also when devices are ordered from Verizon, they are also billed on there, so if council people request iPads, iPhones, all those charges are put on that line item, so a lot of those charges are equipment charges.
So, this year we're going into budget, for example, I have a phone and a, I have a pad, not iPad, Android pad.
Yes.
That's been paid for last year, right?
Yes, so you would not have a, right, at that point, it's thirty-four dollars a month per device.
Okay, that's what my point is, you have thirty-four dollars a month, Russ is this year, how do we get up to seven thousand five hundred?
He said some of us have, he's really the only one that has an iPad or something, so how?
John, Johnny has an iPad.
There's two, so, he's asking why is that seventy-five hundred if we are utilizing those things?
So, we had a couple of, uh, device orders, um, uh, we had an iPad that was, uh, I think twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred dollars, and that goes on there, um, again, any, any equipment that's ordered, and then the thirty-four dollars, um, it also covers the telecommunications cost, uh, anything that comes out of the council office as well for AT&amp;T.
So this year, they were coming in the budget, we, we probably should have a couple thousand spent unless somebody comes up with a purchase.
Correct, yes, if, if, uh, if no one makes any purchases, doesn't need an upgrade, or asks for an upgrade on an iPhone or an iPad or any of those devices, there should be nothing but the monthly service charge.
Okay.
Mayor, I want to make sure that we keep accurate, our mouth for traveling and training, so we don't have to come begging for money when it's time for a conference that we'd normally go to.
I got eighty-five in there now, what would, is that, do you all feel that's adequate for?
Well, I think what he was talking about is, last year when we did some of the expenditure meetings, like, we had significantly less than we realized, and I think he just wants to make sure that that stays, um, because when we did have those meetings, he wasn't able to go on some because the budget had gotten cut for council and that stuff.
That's what I was asking, if that's adequate, and we can put a number in there that we build out.
Do you think so?
Well, that, that number previously had been, I think several years ago, we had like twelve, five.
Yeah.
And we were consistently coming in under budget on the travel and training, so.
I think at the time.
More of what was actually happening.
I think at the time, I was, me and Ernest at the time, then Ernest started going, but I think council members started going to the conferences now, so.
Yes, I mean, I, you know.
And I like, and I like council members to try to attend somebody because it's great information.
Yeah, for us, for, for this, for this budget, you know, we, we build this budget based on previous numbers, and so that's why I ask, you know, what do you all, I don't, I don't know the cost of these, of the conferences, so I mean, if you all are going, it's kind of, well, I look to you all to direct of, you know, what we look at for a travel training budget.
Well, based on the way twenty-twenty-five's tracking, I mean, a ten thousand would cover what's been spent this year, and hopefully we don't have to spend all of that.
All right, so that's a, such a recommendation for ten thousand, would that be adequate, you think?
I think, yeah.
Okay. Are you, are you making notes, or will you make notes?
I, we can make, I'm making notes.
No, there's, this is no motion, this is a workshop, so.
I think that, that is feasible, just because like Johnny said, if we, if anyone else wanted to go, we have that ability, availability to do that, so, thank you.
What was the final?
Uh, ten thousand, so add fifteen hundred.
We'll just raise property taxes and cover that, no problem.
Yeah, we'll put down the justification.
Repeat that again?
To raise a property tax, we'll put down the justification.
I said that wasn't funny. I just want an iPad, I'll go back to that.
All right, so any other questions on city council? All right, thank you, and nobody's up there, um, so innovation?
All right.
Ron's here, still.
Thank you, council members, uh, the Office of Innovation is a department under the mayor's office, that is where a lot of our unique programming that we offer to help build communities, build, um, build healthy communities, uh, create grants, opportunities to beautify the city, uh, as well as, for example, the Office of Financial Empowerment, uh, and a lot of those other services are run through the Office of Innovation. Uh, happy to answer any questions that you may have, as well as pull in my team if necessary. I'll also, I'll add, if you look, we also tried to make cuts to where the items where we weren't needing such highly budgeted figures, if you take out uh, salaries and benefits, we are proposing a nineteen percent cut in what I'll call non-salary operating expenses.
Could you give us a staffing and a, the duties of each staff member?
Give you staffing, and, and what was the second part?
The duties.
Sure, I don't know if I could summarize every bullet point of their duties, uh, but currently under the Office of Innovation, we have, one, we have the Neighborhood Services Director, that is, for example, runs our Love Your Block program that you heard during the last council meeting, as well as our neighborhood improvement grants. We have the Neighborhood Specialist, which also works under the Neighborhood Services Director. We have the Office of Financial Empowerment Director, and we also have our Community Development Coordinator. Uh, one thing that we realized when we were putting the salaries into the Tyler Muniz and Budget System, I will say, is our Community Relations Director's salary is in the Office of Innovation when, uh, actually under the Public Affairs, so that's something we'll, uh, look to fix, so I just wanted to explain that. Uh, and then we used to have a Chief Innovation Officer, so we currently have one vacant position that is funded in this budget, that position will be tweaked, uh, as well, and so that would put what truly is under that office, uh, one, two, three, four, five.
Five, could you give us, not this second, I know you wouldn't have it, a breakdown of each one of those salaries and all, and how long they've been in the job, just kind of a history?
Sure, uh.
You don't have to do it right now, well, if you got it, yeah.
Uh, I don't, I could tell you, some, most of them are about a year to three years, um, but I can bring you each one, how old their tenure, as well as their salary.
So, so overall, describe what, what, what is the biggest programs this has done last year, if we didn't have this, what would we have missed?
Sure, uh, one, uh, you heard is the, our public art initiatives are run through this office that has gotten the city a lot of national attention recently. Uh, that is run and directed by our Community Development Coordinator, as well as our Love Your Block programs, which have repaired uh, multiple homes that repair blight, as well as offered, offered the new, uh, mowing service for senior citizens and disabled, is all run through that, uh, run through that office. So those are programs that would be going away that help your constituents and constituents across the city.
Youth Council, Neighborhood Academy.
That's, yes, those.
I, I would like to see that written down.
Sure.
Important, and, and, uh, I don't understand it still, it's, you know, exactly what each person does, but I'm sure when I see the job description.
I'll be happy to share those with you, as well as the, our team revise their strategic plan, I'll be happy to share that with you as well.
So, let me say, I'm not against them, I just want to be sure I can justify.
Sure.
Ron, I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, councilwoman.
Hi, good morning, um, Lauren's position that you said would be, would you say it would be tweaked, or are we gonna still hold that for someone to come in?
Yes, so in the budget for you, there is a role for that, but the role will be tweaked. So, I would break down Lauren's position as the Chief Innovation Officer into four buckets. One was managerial, uh, managing the rest of the Office of Innovation staff. Two, grant administration, she kind of became the de facto grant administrator for the city. Third was really a project manager, rolling out one-time initiatives, service improvements throughout the city, so for example, working with building and codes to get their permitting process on OpenGov. Uh, and then, four is really more of a public policy advisor. Going forward, the plan is to have that role really focused on the second and third aspects of those that I mentioned, the, uh, the grant administrator and the project management portion. Uh, we feel like through myself and, and the mayor, we can handle the other aspects of her former role. Uh, we want that, that new person in that new role to really focus on going out and finding more grants for the city, which will, A, help pay for the position, but also B, allow us to improve our services faster, uh, there's a, a lot of. Uh, there's a, a lot of opportunities, and also I can tell you that, uh, having one person for the city that is responsible for kind of leading our grant efforts would also bring some cohesion and, uh, accountability to grants that we apply for throughout the city.
Thank you, I agree with that about the grants, that's headed in the right direction, thank you.
The travel and training went up three hundred percent.
Yes, that. One of the things that, uh, wanted to do for our team is give them the opportunity to seek some professional development. So for example, uh, and currently, a lot of their trips are often, they're able to get grants to cover them, but just in case they were not able to, I want them to be able to continue to do that. For example, next week, two of our staff members are presenting at the Neighborhood USA Conference. Uh, one is actually speaking on some of the programs that we are running through the city and, and getting national attention for, but wanted them to be able to go to future years just in case they're not able to, uh, get the grant funding for that. Uh, also, for example, our Office, uh, of Financial Empowerment Director spoke at the National League of Cities around what we're doing through the Office of Financial Empowerment. Want to make sure that if, for example, they're not speaking next year, they can continue to go and get that information. Uh, but what we did was pay for that through cuts to other line items.
Is the National League of Cities, does that, Kevin, the, uh, governor of California's, Kyle, didn't even want to start it there?
Uh, I do not know, I mean, I know TML is part of the National League of Cities as well.
I think he is. I don't know how much we'll be following ourselves along San Francisco or not.
I didn't, I did not get what you're saying.
Me neither.
Who's the head of the League of, what's he called?
National League of Cities?
We talked to the governor, he started, he's out of there, I don't know, trying to be involved with something.
I think the city is a great, a great organization, a great program. I think, so you talk, I mean, it's come to a one thing.
I love, I love.
I mean, just.
Just pointing you down.
Well, I don't think he's in charge of it.
No, 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 he's not in charge. He just, he was one of the instigating founders of it.
National League of Cities was started in nineteen twenty-four.
Well, uh, is he involved now then?
I mean, what? I get us off the track. Males all over the country are involved in.
I, I, I withdraw that, I was trying to be sarcastic about San Francisco's problems, but I take it back.
Well, I would just say that the reason our team is there speaking is to kind of learn from us.
Anyway.
I don't think we got any story.
No, it was a little bit over, that wouldn't be sorry. Mayors all across the, the country, conservative mayors, liberal mayors, independent mayors are part of this organization. Just to think that and say that one person is involved in it, and therefore we don't need to be involved in it, is just, uh, nonsensical.
Right, I withdrew that, I was trying to make a joke about the mayor of San Francisco, which was not very funny.
Governor of California.
Let's move on.
Yeah, anyway, I should not have gone into that grassy area if I followed.
Anyways, back to your question, Councilman Donald, does that answer it?
Yeah. Thank you.
Oh, okay, I love your block, there's two things, forty thousand and a hundred fifty thousand. Can you give us a little more information on those?
Uh, I believe the hundred fifty thousand is actually under the Financial Empowerment Center, so I'll, uh, I'll go that one. Second, uh, the, the forty thousand for Love Your Block is their neighborhood repairs, uh, home repairs program that we heard a lot about during the council meeting. Uh, of that forty thousand, ten thousand is to continue the new, uh, lawn care assistance program. Uh, it was, it's paid this year through ARPA. Uh, obviously, we've gotten tremendous feedback, positive feedback from the community, uh, well over the demand we could, we could satisfy, and so want to keep that program going. So ten thousand of that forty thousand is to cover that.
Jump into the empowerment, one fifty, I know what that goes for, give us the numbers.
Uh, the, that is the grant that we provide to the Financial Empowerment Center every year. Uh, it's, and it's been the same every year.
But how many clients do they have?
Uh, that I will turn over to Tyler, he can probably answer that question better.
Most of the yards.
I'm sorry?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Yeah, so to answer that, um, I can answer it a couple different ways. So the Greater Jackson Financial Empowerment Center has actually grown to more of a regional approach. If you remember from last year, um, we actually have adopted McKenzie and also Brownsville as cities that we serve. I'll be really specific, that the money that Jackson gives the Financial Empowerment Center stays in Jack's salaries and overhead for, uh, marketing, all those types of things. As far as clients that are seen, um, about five hundred clients total were seen this last year, and those clients represent families, and about two hundred of those would have been within the Jackson City limit. I would say this year, we, um, there's a couple milestones that I'm pretty excited about, and we'll be presenting, uh, with Jordan Howerton next month on some of these numbers as well. But this past year, we actually hit a million, a million dollar mark, marking the difference between savings that were increased across our clients, um, and the difference from debt that was paid off. We hit the million dollar mark here locally, and so I'd be interested in a few years to see what an ROI would look like with some of those numbers. Another thing is that we still are maintaining, year over year, about a forty point credit score increase per family, um, which is pretty phenomenal, so.
Yeah.
Yes, I did my math right, for Massacre County, not outside of Massacre County, it's about seven hundred and fifty dollars a client, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't done those numbers, but I'll, I'll trust you on the math.
Sure, man. It's eight million.
We have some, people that are watching online, um, made some requests, actually, when we're asking questions, council members, we speak into the microphone so they can make sure and hear the discussion happen. So, so we got, so right now, just, we'll cover any other questions on innovation, Love Your Block, financial empowerment, public affairs, we'll just do all those, all those four, any more questions on those? Those are found, you see the parentheses next to you, found on three and page four of your expenses.
Oh, no, public affairs, what, what goes into community relations? Twenty-one thousand.
That is for a lot of the events that, uh, the city operates in the community. Um, employee luncheon service days, uh, prayer breakfast, those are the types of, it's more of, uh, events that the city puts on or helps sponsor or run.
The, the retirement went up high, is that a true number or is that an average across the board? I think last year was not, not exactly in the right place.
Yeah, that was, that was very, very good timing, Nathan just sent me a text and asked about aggressive benefit force.
If you look, if you look at any, any department that has, uh, that has personnel, you see the health benefit line almost across the board decreases a radical number in this budget. That's because all employee benefits were budgeted into that one line. Um, the, the responsible thing to do is to break them out so that we can actually see what the costs are. And so we actually have done that throughout the year, and we've budgeted them in the correct lines next year. And so if you'll see the health benefit line, which used to have retirement, other benefits, all of that has gone down in almost every line, and the other ones have gone up.
So this has been cleaned up?
Yes, sir, and there's, there's going to be more cleanup, but, but we're, that's what that is.
Any other questions on those three, four, three?
Uh, I'll just mention for the public affairs, if you, uh, excluding the salaries and benefits as well, we look to make cuts for items that to better reflect our true costs and are looking at an eighteen percent cut for that department. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Remaining on page four, bottom of page four, if I go over and dive a little bit, uh, is municipal court, city court.
This is so much better than last year.
Yeah, it really is.
We are progress over perfection, for sure.
He's got Michigan.
Ma'am?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, I like your Michigan. That's where I went to school.
Hold on, I figure I get a couple of points.
Any questions for city court clerk?
Mr. Hubbard.
Yes, sir.
You just have to state it, uh, as an office staff, how are you looking with your office staff? I mean, I know.
We're, we're still down one, and we're interviewing, I think, next week. But we'd also, I would like to request a part-timer, if it's possible, they said we couldn't get any more staff. If I could at least get a part timer, that would help us out a lot.
So you, you hired that one, and you said you did a part?
We hired one.
Oh, they, they in this budget?
The one.
The one is.
You know how much the part-time would cost?
It's, it's, it's not gonna make us whole budget, because we have so much turnover, we're gonna lose staff. I'm sure, very soon, so it shouldn't affect the budget at all.
But you said that need for that one person is already in this budget?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and I, I forgot to ask the other, he's still here though, I can ask, ask you now. Is there anything else in your, let me come right back to you, anything else in what you talked about a minute ago? Is there anything else that you would need that's not in this budget?
No, sir, everything we need is reflected in.
Thank you very much. Let's tell it back to you, is there everything that you need included in this budget?
Uh, the judge was requesting seventy-five thousand for magistrate.
For what?
A magistrate, because when he's off, uh, it's hard to find a replacement judge, and sometimes people have to stay in jail longer than they're supposed to, and, uh, that could get very costly eventually.
How you come up with the seventy-five thousand?
That's his number, yeah.
Okay.
How many employees are in, um, city court?
Um, I've got one, two, three, four, five currently.
Including the judge?
Would that be six, but we, we have, we have a sister DA, a sister public defender.
Okay.
Okay, we have a janitor, and then we have, uh, the office manager and four more deputy clerks.
Okay.
Does the unmiscuous issue, the DA, is, is he paid by the, the city or does the DA's office?
I believe the city pays for assistant DA.
DA and the public defender.
And the public defender.
City. Hold on, I didn't get my, you said the city pays for those too?
Yes, sir.
And one last question, Mr. Hubbard, I don't know if it was last year, a year before, uh, we had a budget here, was there was a, some kind of thing came up about, uh, people working in, in your, in your office?
Yes.
And, uh, it was said that a study or something is going on, or whatever, what was all that study?
Never heard anything about it, never heard anything.
Excuse me, I think Ron was checking on that.
Who, uh?
We have, we have, they've never done that to us.
We reached out to M-Pass and the hospital.
Okay, M-Pass is the one that's doing the study?
Yes.
You haven't gotten a response from them?
Been three years, I'm, I'm thinking.
Two, two years.
Contacting them, pass if they don't respond.
Person that was supposed to be doing the study? The person that was supposed to be doing the study?
Yeah, we think what they might have not be there anymore, the person that was supposed to do the study.
It's not been done or it's not being done, is that right?
If it's, if it's been done, it hasn't, they haven't reported back to us.
Right, and Ms. Luna was looking into that also, Teresa Luna.
Have you or your staff been contacted by M-Pass about it?
No, sir.
So then it's not being done then? All right, thank you.
But that was the main purpose of the study, to see how many staff that you would need. So can we, who can we contact to see?
See why there hadn't been.
Yeah, we'll have to contact some other individuals, they, you know, as you know, M-Pass is very compartmentalized, and so, um, we may have to look at, we have to contract that out, that'll be a cost. We're trying to do this cost efficient, so we can look at options to that and bring that back to you all.
Didn't we already contract that?
After the Hines office?
TML, just, they don't have, they don't have persons to do a study, they can get some contact with some, but, right, we were using M-Pass because that was going to be a service they provide, um, and they obviously, they haven't got back to us, and a free service is not worth anything, it's not being done, so.
Mr. Mayor, that might be a good idea, to have an outside source to be able to do that, so we could really get some good answers and help.
Costs associated, we'll bring that back to you all to make the determination going forward.
Thank you.
M-Pass is located where, in Nashville?
Knoxville.
Knoxville.
They have offices throughout the state.
All right, well, will you follow up on that, and the next councilman let us know what the deal is? I'll go to Knoxville if you need to go, I mean, I think.
That's the money in the budget now.
Just got the travel one, you can go.
I think that could be the song. Just follow up and let us know, thank you.
All right, anything else, city court?
Real quick, that's half time, part-time staff, could we look and see how much it would be then?
Yeah, we have to get a, yeah, uh, an hourly rate and see what that would be, what the hours would be, so we can look at that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just real quick.
No, no, those were, uh, Mr. Hubbard's requesting a part-time person in the office, and then we could also, we can run the numbers on the magistrate, um, on what that would cost. I think he's, he's mentioned it, he hasn't, I think he gave a price, he hasn't given a question we haven't talked about at least. I can reach back out to him about that.
That's it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
On the, with recovery court and mental health court, which takes you on over to page five of your expense report. We have a ribbon cutting, right, for, for our mental health court on Friday, Council?
Yeah, I'm gonna be there, I'm gonna be there.
What time is that again?
Ten o'clock.
It's gonna be at ten thirty.
Ten thirty.
At, in the courtroom.
Where at?
At city court, in the courtroom.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask about, so has it not been implemented yet, still in the setup phase?
So it has been implemented, we officially opened in January, but we're waiting to hire new staff to make sure we had everybody kind of on board and got opened, and then we're, so that's what we're doing on Friday.
And how's that going?
It's going well, we actually have three participants, which is exciting, so we've slowly been entering people in just to make sure we, you know, it just says we're learning and growing, so it's been going well so far. We have a treatment team that's established that's helping us, and we're going on our partnerships with the local treatment providers, and it's going nowhere.
Right, right.
Any other questions for recovery court, mental health court? I think you all do, you know, annual presentation on numbers, and so I think, I want to ask you for the, the numbers right now off the top of your head, so just, I get on the count and present the numbers of people that have been served.
I could give those numbers for you, we have annual numbers of people and clients that we serve, but I know we've had two hundred and twelve clients graduate our recovery court in the last twenty-three years, so it's exciting.
Is there any funding request that you need that's not included in this budget?
No, sir, everything is here.
Thank you.
Yeah, or you foresee that you may need, so, okay.
I think so.
Thank you.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Before we get to the rest of them, you guys take a quick break, break, five minute break, yeah, we'll do that.
All right.
Before we get to the rest of them, you guys take a quick break, break, five minute break, body break, yeah. We'll do that. All right.
...